Good evening, everyone. Just so the public is aware, we are going to wait just a couple of minutes to see if one or two more of our Township Board representatives attend. So bear with us. Thank you. All right. Good evening. The public hearing of the Town of Cunningham to approve a proposed property tax increase for 2025 levy year will come to order. The time is now 6:34 November 10th, 2025. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Wu?
Here.
Trustee Evans?
Trustee Hersi?
Here.
Trustee Colacetti?
Here.
Trustee Bishop? Trustee Wilkin?
Here.
Trustee Quisenberry? Supervisor Chinnewith?
Present.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We are all set. Quorum is present. Um, I'm sorry, I had something to say here. Um, all right. So we'll now move to public input. A public hearing to approve a proposed property tax increase for the Town of Cunningham for 2025 will be held on November 10th, 2025 at 6:30 PM at the City of Urbana City Council Chambers, 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois, 61801. Any person desiring to appear at the public hearing and present and present testimony to the taxing district may contact Darcy Sander for Town Clerk, 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois, 61801, at 217-384-2362. The corporate and special purposes purpose property taxes extend or abated for 2024 were $2,384,990.90. The proposed corporate property tax to be levied for 2025 are $3,200,000. This represents a 34% increase over the previous year. The property taxes extend for debt service and public building commission leases for 2024 were $0.00. The estimated property tax to be levied for debt services and public building commission leases for 2025 are $0.00. This represents a 0% increase over the previous year. The total property taxes extended or abated for 2024 were $2,384,990.90. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2025 are $3,200,000. This represents a 34% increase over the previous year. Yes, is there anything additional in that regard?
We can move on now to public input for the public hearing?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that'd like to speak, you can come to the mic, state your name, address, and you have five minutes. All right. Seeing none, hearing none, public input is now closed. Oh, Danielle?
Um, just, I wanted to explain for the public because 34% sounds like a whopping large number, just how we come to those figures. So Township is a unit of government that is under tax caps. The amount of tax, whether we were to levy, you know, 12%, yeah, 0%, 12%, 3,000% more, the amount that will be capped is actually limited to the tax caps. What we do each year, and I've been having the same numbers for a number of years, but because I saw that there are new, there's new construction coming onto the tax rolls, there's no longer necessarily the uncertainty with Carl, there is uncertainty with OSF. And so if we don't ask for a certain amount, and for some reason, the value of properties, which is, does not mean that people pay more house by house, it means that there's more houses contributing, that if we don't capture the new construction in our tax levy at the maximum, then we lose it, and we not only lose it that year, we lose it forever. So we are capped at a percentage of increase each year. So as, you know, Chair of Public Health Board, I do this each year. As the Township Supervisor, I do it each year. Those are tax caps, and at entities that are under tax caps, I essentially kind of guesstimate at a level that I don't have to worry about whether or not we will capture all of the revenue. I certainly don't think that the, that our tax base will grow by 34%. But I do think that big entities like the U of I, Carl, and OSF, these very large entities make a huge difference, and their status changing makes, makes a big difference in our tax base. So that is why I'm asking for 34%. It's kind of like when you ask for the whole candy store and you walk out with one candy cane. So we ask for the whole candy store, but we'll just get what the, what is actually a levy to us. I mean, it is the case that in 2020, Urbana voters were extremely generous with Township and not only restored what had been caught, cut, so that we could continue providing general assistance, but added a modest amount more, and that pretty much exclusively either serves rental assistance, which has been at a rate that's four times higher than before the pandemic, or our family shelter. Right now, our family shelter is almost 100% funded through the state. That is not guaranteed funding, and so we wanted to make sure that we had sustainable funding for that shelter. We serve eight families who are literally homeless with children in Urbana School District. So it's a pretty modest program, but we do have sustainable funding, and that was our promise to taxpayers is if we're gonna do this, we want to have it funded sustainably. That said, I think people will, if you look at your tax bill, people will see some variety of, say, 60 to about $300 a year. I think the average is about 150 to 175 that people will pay to the Township for a year. And I am, you know, the supervisor's memo lays out in detail what people get for their money, and I'm always happy to talk with a constituent if they have any questions about the Township. Thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor Chinnewith. With no further business before this body, the Town of Cunningham meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All right. The Urbana City Council meeting will now come to order. The time is 6:41, and today again is Monday, November 10th, 2025. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans? Councilmember Hersi?
Here.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry? Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, let the record reflect. Quorum is present. Thank you, Clerk. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 20th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? None? All right. We're good?
I'll move approval of those minutes.
All right.
I'll second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Those minutes stand approved. I'm sorry. Do I need to, I'm, I am so sorry.
You're okay.
Please call the roll. Well, a voice vote. I'm sorry with that one. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, the ayes have it. That motion passes. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Are there any additions or changes this evening to, from the City Council in regards to the agenda? All right. Seeing none, the agenda stands as presented. We will now move to presentations and public input. At this time, are there any presentations that will be made? None. All right. We will now move to members of the public. You are invited to address the council. Please state your name and city of residence. For the record, each member of the community will have five minutes to speak. Is there any members of the public that'd like to speak at this time?
Would you have an email?
Yeah. You, you want to read it? I've had enough.
Yeah, I can read if you've had enough reading after the
Appreciate you, Grace.
...previous meeting. Please read my comments into the record at the November 10th regular City Council, Council meeting. Dear City Council and Mayor Williams, I am writing with deep concern over the recent UPD use of a drone at the No Kings Rally in apparent violation of state law. Cervantes' presentation at last week's Committee of the Whole Meeting stated that a drone was deployed using exception 15-3 of the Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act. The specific exemption allows for the use of a drone, quote, "if a law enforcement agency possesses reasonable suspicion that under the particular circumstances, swift action is needed to prevent imminent harm to life," end quote. Although this act does not specifically define imminent harm, the Illinois Safety Act defines it by stating "an imminent harm is not merely a fear of future harm, no matter how great the fear and no matter how great the likelihood of the harm, but one, but is one that, from appearances, must be instantly confronted and addressed." During this presentation, Cervantes describes the deployment of the drone by stating, "When we deployed the drone, which was about at Race Street, because we knew they were continuing west, we gave the order for the crowd to get off of the roadway, to get out of the roadway. That was not permitted, that was not a permitted route. It was unlawful at that point. We told them to get back on the sidewalk." He also states that the drone was deployed after the route deviation and traffic obstruction at a main intersection. In explaining the rationale of believing there was an imminent threat to life, Cervantes states, and I say imminent harm because it was directly en route of the hospital corridor, and that was one of the things that we discussed. Luckily, we had touched base with the people about a week before, so Carl's security and ER director were made aware of the march happening. So when the route did go that way, what our main concern was that main entrance off Choyer and University is how ambulances get people into the ER. We wanted to make sure that wasn't going to be blocked, or if it did, we could reroute traffic if we needed to. So having that drone in the air gave us the ability to see what was going on and monitor traffic, and then see anywhere else that we had to block off traffic to make sure cars weren't going around, and wanted to make sure that everybody was safe." End quote on that. It's hard to believe that this vague possibility, that this small group of protesters who were engaging in a First Amendment protected activity, and who might continue in a particular direction for multiple blocks towards the vicinity of a hospital, would meet the definition of imminent threat to life, requiring swift action. The Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act is incredibly clear in its language that protests and marches cannot be surveilled by drones. This is clarified explicitly at several points within the act. The Illinois OAG further defines some examples of First Amendment assemblies at which law enforcement may not use drones to gather information on individuals. A permitted rally at a public forum, such as City Plaza, an unpermitted sidewalk protest targeting a government facility, a protest march along public streets, whether permitted or unpermitted, and an unpermitted demonstration by protesters at a routed or special event. Without a doubt, the No Kings Rally and subsequent march on mine and university were protected First Amendment activities that were explicitly protected from drone surveillance in the act. If UPD had been discussing for about a week the possibility that protesters might march in the direction of the hospital, there's absolutely no reason that available officers shouldn't have been prepared to head that direction if needed, to direct the flow of traffic and ensure safety. In fact, photographs of the protesters near the main hospital entrance show three UPD squad cars blocking both westbound lanes and the center lane of university, with protesters standing on the adjacent sidewalk. UPD's physical presence at this location undermines the claim that aerial surveillance was necessary to have the ability to see what was going on and monitor traffic, and then see anywhere else that would be blocked off by traffic to make sure cars weren't going around, as Cervantes stated, even if this did meet the definition of a situation requiring swift action to prevent imminent harm. At a later slide in the presentation titled Policy Compliance, one of the bullet points listed Freedom of, Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act 15-3 and 22. It is important to note that Section 20-2 of the Act discusses video retention requirements when a drone has been used at a routed event or special event. As stated before, the act is very clear in its language that these events are absolutely different from First Amendment protected activities and have separate requirements for drone usage. If the city believed that the No Kings Rally was not a First Amendment protected activity and was instead a special event, one of the requirements for opening or for operating a drone at the special event or routed event is that notice of the drone must be posted at the event location, including at major entry points for at least 24 hours before the event. Additionally, the notice can enter the rest into the record, though, Sarah Roper. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. All right, are there any other letters? All right. Next, we will hear council input and communication. Are there any members of the council who wish to speak? No one? All right. We will move on. Are there any reports from standing committee? All right, seeing, we will now proceed to Committee of the Whole chaired by Councilmember Jaya Colacetti of Ward 4. The floor is yours.
Thank you. We don't have any items on the consent agenda from last week, so we will move on to the regular agenda items. The first I'd like to move on behalf of the committee is ordinance number 2025-11-028, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, amend table 6-3 to establish lower maximum building heights in the CMU campus mixed-use zoning district in specific areas, Plan Case Number 2509-T-25.
I'll second.
Our motion made by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion? Mary Alice?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to call attention for the public and thank the staff that the, the height has been updated in the development regulations so that it is bounded now by University as the northern boundary. And before, it had not been, there was no northern boundary, and so that has been added into the zoning ordinance.
All right. Any additional discussion? Grace?
And just clarify, that was all the things that we talked about last week, just saying they all got updated in there. Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to move ordinance number 2024-11-029, an ordinance to approve the preliminary planned unit development at 704 East Windsor Road, Plan Case Number 2510-PUD25.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any further discussion? Mary Alice?
I think we had talked about, I'm just looking here, about the specific development regulations that we just approved in the previous one. So the previous one had the development regulations for 120 feet south of University, north of Green and 65. This one actually is incorrect and says it includes the 40 on the west side, sorry, the east side of Lincoln. So they don't, they aren't in alignment. Unless I'm misunderstanding something. Am I at the right place?
We're looking at the one on Windsor right now. I think you might be thinking of
I'm looking at the wrong one. Sorry. Okay. This is the problem, not having paper sometimes. Sorry about that.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to recommend approval for ordinance number 2025-11-030, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, rezone 905 West Oregon Street from R6 to CMU, and 907 and 909, West Oregon Street from R5 to CMU, Plan Case Number 2511-M25.
Motion made by Jaya. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion?
So can I, is this the one that has the, the misalignment with the development regulations? I'm just having difficulty finding it in the, this is the one that has the
Me?
Yes.
Um, I see where, where that chart has not been updated. It's page 83 of our packets, or page four of this particular item, where it has maximum height of principal structure, 120, 65, and then 40 is still listed. And there's seen note 19, I believe, note 19 and the 40 piece are now no longer relevant because they were struck out of the last, the item number one.
So can I offer, I don't. Can I offer an amendment that it's reflected in the previous one that we just approved? That we, we, okay, I'm gonna make an official amendment. I move an amendment that the development regulations as listed in the rezoning is reflected in ordinance number 2025-11-028, which is the one that we just approved. So we basically duplicate that table here. Does that make sense? All right, that's my amendment. Anybody second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, so the amendment that was requested, do I need to say that all again? All right, can you repeat it all? I didn't
So my amendment requested that the development regulations table in this particular ordinance is updated to reflect ordinance number 2025-11-028, which we just updated the lower maximum building height in CMU. So I just want to be able to take what we just approved and replace this table for this one.
All right, so that motion for the amendment has been made by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion around the amendment? Sharice?
I'm just trying to understand, because, of course, I'm having a hard time even finding my packet for tonight. I'm, I'm trying to understand what it is exactly that you're amending again?
So in the previous ordinance, I'm sorry, may I speak, Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mary Alice, thank you.
Um, in the previous amendment, we had removed the 40-foot height from the east side of uni, sorry, east side of Lincoln, and also made a northern boundary for the, for university. So this does not cover anything north of university. So if we, if we approve the amendment, that it takes that language and puts it here.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we're back to the original motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Has amended?
All right, so we need to now have another roll call back to the regular motion, which was made by Jaya, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to move Resolution Number 2025-11-088R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for housing needs study by the Champaign County Regional Plan Commission for approval.
Motion made by Jaya. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion? All right, Mary Alice?
Um, so we did receive some public input that wasn't asked to be read in from Esther Pat, requesting some additions to the housing study, specifically talking about distinguishing between homeowner vacancy and rental housing vacancy in different areas, broken down by census tract. I was wondering if there had been any discussion at the city level about incorporating some of this into the plan?
We can bring the request to RPC to see if they will support it to be added to the scope. We can provide that information to them. And I believe that Esther pointed out as far as just in general, the, the Imagine Urbana Plan, where she brought the request from, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So I'm wondering if we should maybe put this on hold until we have a better understanding from RPC what they would be able to do?
Yes, we can.
I, I guess, this is discussion time, so that's what I would ask of the people who moved it, if we could keep this in, in council so that we can get an update from RPC to see if they would be willing to add this.
Now, as we go into discussion, I do want to let you all know Olivia just came in behind that can provide more information. And then the only other And then, the only other thing was just the amount that was listed in the email for the agreement. Yeah, that was, that was different. So, our scope is within the 50,000 for the agreement with RPA, RPC, excuse me.
Olivia, did you want to speak?
Was the question about just differentiating between rental types or homeownership types?
It was a little broader than that. It broke it down by census tract and distinguishing between homeowner vacancy rates and rental housing vacancy rates. In addition, some information about duplexes for owner occupied and not owner occupied.
Yeah, I believe that's fully within scope, and also, we were, we're going to take a look that's even more fine-grained than at the census tract level.
So, that is in the scope? Because I didn't see that when I was reading through the-
The intent is to capture submarket data at its most sort of fine-grained level as, you know, as reasonably possible. So, that could even be below the census or smaller than the census tract level and would capture nuance in homeownership type, rental type, whether it's like a shadow market activity, whether that's, you know, it's, if there are multiple people living there, just really capturing the full nature and scope of existing conditions here within the city of Urbana.
So, it sounds to me like from your perspective, this is already included. Is that correct?
That would be my perspective, yes.
All right, I, I guess, whenever I'm signing, whenever I'm signing off on something like this, I like to be as clear and transparent as possible. So, I guess what I would say is I would just like to add then, to have some of that language incorporated into it, if it's, if we're not actually asking them to do something beyond what, what is intended by staff. So, that would be my ask. I don't know if other council members agree, but-
Grace?
I appreciate the questions, because for Olivia, we're talking specifically about questions that came in from the public, from Esther Pat. We had a list of things to, you know, requested to be included there. I am fine passing it for now, as is. I think that what's on the table, the proposed timeline, this looks like this will be, you know, a process over seven months and over 800 hours of staff time from RPC. And I think that we have the big-picture buckets there already. That just might be a little more fine-detailed than would be in the proposal. Like, the data collection is compile existing public data sets on housing employment demographics, determine gaps in data, meet with staff to prioritize filling data gaps. So, I think that a lot of that is kind of embedded in there, and I definitely agree with taking those specific questions and requests and seeing if all of them are in there at that detailed level, and if not, if they can be. But I think that from what I'm seeing, I'm okay with it for now because I think that the bigger picture already includes that, and that's maybe a little more fine details that I do hope that we can include, but also some of this being gaps in data. So, I'm also prepared to hear the honest truth of what do we have as available information and what don't we, and I think that those things would be discovered along the way.
Any other discussion? All right.
So, I think, you can tell me if I'm incorrect, but I can ask it to be held into City Council without a vote?
I, I, I'm actually not sure. I will be honest with you. So, I know only one council member is required to ask that an item be pulled from the consent agenda.
Right.
But in terms of keeping something in council, I think historically, what we have done more often has been, we forwarded it to a meeting certain with, with a motion and a vote. And I, I admit, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Sharice?
I guess my question, which is usually this, is there a deadline that we, where we have to vote on this to make this contract work?
We were hoping to kick off this research in, in the month of November. So, the, there's no actual deadline beyond, the longer that it's held in council, the, it, you know,
Except the information, you know, we won't get that information. It'll take, take us longer.
That's correct.
Okay.
In terms of the funding, the funding is secured. It's just a matter of when we can get started, and we obviously are also trying to be mindful of RPC's staffing, and they've kind of, they've allocated resources in this, the timeline that's illustrated in the scope.
Well, I'm also thinking about the fact that even getting this started in November, the holiday season starts up, things tend to slow down office-wise, the things tend, you know, because people take off. We're just coming, we're dealing with even a more, a bigger problem on a federal level regarding if we'll even be able to get this information on some level, if they will be able to get this information, how quickly that'll happen based on the fact that the government's been shut down for over a month, and that's who has this information, if you want to get down to the nitty-gritty of it. So, my, I guess what I want to understand, I don't see anything wrong with putting this off for a couple of meetings, mainly because we don't even know if they'll be able to get the resources to get, to get the information that we're asking for, let alone more detailed information.
Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. Olivia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, Sharice, I think that's a good point, but I think that we're able to pull this from county data, much of what is being requested, I think is what I heard last meeting, is that some of this in terms of inventory?
There is probably county data that's available. I, I don't want to-
I might be thinking of something else.
But the council, the, excuse me, the census data will be available that's been published for the 10-year census, and then there's also the ACS five-year estimates that have already been published. So, I think another important thing to note is RPC has a, has their own data resources that they've compiled and can utilize, which would capture data on a small, a unit of measurement that's smaller than a census tract and that's currently available. So, I think there would be certainly enough to get started. One thing to be mindful of is we do want to start the public input session, section of the scope when the students are back for their second semester. So, that would be kicked off in January. So, I think if we're just mindful of that as potentially a deadline, I think we could, that would, yeah, that, that would be one of the sources of data that would be required for this, with that public input.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So, I will say that I lean more towards kind of what Grace was describing, is I feel like that's captured in the way I read it. Mary Alice, I hear your point of like, let's say it if we mean it. I don't have a problem pushing this off as long as we still get it done, but I do want to flag that our next City Council meeting is the week of Thanksgiving, and we're having trouble having, getting quorum as it is. So, just to think about the timeline, if it feels realistic that we will be able to move this forward, that's our only additional opportunity in November. So, I'm personally comfortable with the, the level of information that's written. I certainly would want to make sure all of those questions got to RPC, but my, my reading is that it would be included, but I, I understand if folks have a different perspective.
I also, sorry, I just want to add one more piece. I apologize for joining this conversation late. The costs outlined in the proposed scope are valid through December 31st, 2025. So, there actually is a near-term deadline that I should have reported earlier. Thank you.
I was able to briefly check on the council rules and procedures, and a motion to defer, which was asked about earlier, does require a motion and a second and a majority vote to send it to a future meeting.
So, has that motion to defer been made?
Do I, can I make it over? Is it a privileged motion?
You could make a motion to defer, but it will require a second and a majority vote.
Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion to defer this vote until the next City Council meeting, which I believe is on November 24th.
Our motion to defer to the next City Council meeting made by Mary Alice, is there a second? All right. That motion pa-, that motion fails, I'm sorry. All right, now we are back to the original motion. If there's no further discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I ask a point of procedure where we need a vote for defer? I was reading on page 19, a motion to defer and a second, and that subsequent ones require a majority vote.
So, I am currently looking at, and again, this is why we need to clean this up, which we will come back to you guys with an updated version of council rules. But I was looking at the 93-page City Council Procedures and Orientation from 2020, which-
Page 19 was what I was looking at, at the bottom.
Yep, that's what I was looking at, too.
Because I only see to defer, it just takes the request of two or more older persons through making a motion to defer and a second of that motion, period. And then, any subsequent deferral on the matter requires a three-fourth vote.
It's implied that you vote on motions. We can't just make a motion without voting, and three-fourths implies a supermajority rather than just like a simple majority. So, if we were to, at the November 24th, if, if that motion had not failed and it was deferred to the November 24th meeting, a subsequent motion to defer would require a greater number of affirmative votes.
So, implied simple majority there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could add to the notes to clarify for our future things. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. So, finally, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to move approval of Resolution Number 2025-11-089R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class A designation for 25 o'clock brewing company LLC, 208 West Grig Street, Suite 101, Urbana, Illinois.
All right, motion made by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colacetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is not on. Are there any reports from special committees this evening? All right, we will move on. Are there any reports from city officers? Seeing none, all right. The next item is a discussion on police surveillance technology, ordinance number 2024-12-042. The item is for discussion only, so council members, you all have the floor. Grace?
Thank you. I have some updates that I'd be happy to share, just comparing some of the definitions of Urbana versus other places that I did just very recently email, email out to council and leadership, but would be happy to put that on the screen and just review for some of your future brain food, and we can definitely continue the conversation. Did want to just open it up to our city attorney with the exigent circumstances definition because that might be a more relatively simple one to talk about your two alternatives and then get into some of the others next.
Thank you, Grace. Welcome, Matt.
All right, let me. Can you hear me okay? All right. Pull this up. So, as Grace mentioned, there's kind of been a lingering question out there related to the draft ordinance that's been on the agenda, the most current version, and it relates to the proposed definition for exigent circumstances. And the specific issue that I've been looking at, trying to resolve, is raised by the last sentence, and I'm seeing that it's pretty small on the screen. I'm going to try to zoom in here, but make it a little bit easier to read. And I'll read it here. Exigent circumstances for the purposes of this temporary acquisition and use shall be of the type of emergency situations as contemplated under Chapter 6 of the City Code. So, then that, of course, refers us to our own code. That chapter of the City Code is the Civil Emergencies chapter. And in looking at it initially, it, it's outdated. It was first adopted in 1977 after the state's enactment of the Illinois Emergency Services and Disaster Act, which was the precursor to the Emergency Management Agency Act, which is the current law. And under the original ESDA Act, we'll call it, local municipalities and local governments were required to adopt their own mini ESDA agencies essentially at the city level or the county level, and the city of Urbana did that. That, the structure of that is outlined in our ordinance in Chapter 6. But ultimately, this Chapter 6 sort of relies on the state law. It's a creation of the state statute, and it's not been updated since it was initially adopted in 1977. A lot of things have changed since then, including the fact that Urbana no longer has its own Emergency Services and Disaster Agency. We have, we're part of the Joint Emergency Management Agency with the county and the city of Champaign and other local government entities. And so, the definition of sort of the types of emergency situations that Chapter 6 contemplates referred to the original emergency law, the ESDA Act, and now the Emergency Management Act. The, the original thought we had that, well, we can just kind of update Chapter 6 alongside the discussion of the Police Surveillance Technology Ordinance. The more we looked at it and the closer we looked at it, the more evident that it was that that would become a bigger lift and probably more of a distraction and a side road than we might want to undertake while we're trying to move along this draft surveillance ordinance. And so, in light of the fact that it's really the statutory definition of disaster that is the type of emergency situation our Chapter 6 in our City Code contemplates, it refers back to the state law, and the state law defines disaster. I will pull it up and read it for you. Disasters are, in occurrence or a threat of widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life, property resulting from any natural, technological, or human cause, including but not limited to fire, flood, earthquake, wind, storm, hazardous material spill, or other contamination requiring emergency action to avert danger or damage, epidemic contamination. It includes many examples of specific types of disasters. Anything that falls under this definition then would require either a gubernatorial disaster declaration or a local disaster declaration, or both potentially, in order to sort of engage the emergency management process for the mayor and, and/or governor to exercise emergency powers. The best example, most recent example, that would be the COVID-19 epidemic, pandemic, I should say, where we had both local and statewide disaster declarations in place, and we're operating under emergency powers for an extended period of time. Obviously, that is of a different nature than something that might be, you know, civil unrest-related or a weather, natural disaster-related type of event. And so, I think the key here is that tying the definition of exigent circumstances to Chapter 6 sort of inherently ties it to the definition of disaster in the state statute. And that, from, from a practical standpoint, means that for an exigent circumstance to exist or to be determined locally to exist, to allow for this exception, to council approval for, temporary approval for the use of surveillance technology, a state disaster declaration or a local disaster declaration would have to precede it essentially as a natural outgrowth of the emergency management statute in our local ordinance. And so, that, I'm going to scroll down and kind of get to the practical implications and then, you know, what I would suggest as potential alternatives. I think there's kind of two paths that seem to be evident here. The first would be generally to stick with the original language when this ordinance was proposed. and the language that appears in a lot of the other communities' ordinances that have adopted a surveillance ordinance for exigent circumstances, which does not tie it to this disaster declaration type of standard. It sort of relies more on the discretion of the police chief and sort of them making a call in the moment as to whether or not the event necessitates the use of a technology that wasn't previously approved, kind of making a call on the go. That's one potential path. The other potential path, if it's council's intent to want to restrict the discretion piece of it and not allow quite as broad a discretion for the police chief to determine an exigent circumstance, would be in line with what I think this last sentence of the current definition was attempting to do, but in a more direct way, simply replace the language that's currently proposed with the statutory definition for disaster and sort of tie the two together. And if that was council's intent to make it more mechanical, to have this follow a disaster declaration, then my recommendation would be to essentially just put the statutory language from the Emergency Management Act in the ordinance. And so I've kind of shown you what that looks like, what we'd add and what we would redact. I think we could also keep the second sentence that currently exists, which is the use of surveillance technology "in exigent circumstances shall not infringe upon an individual's right to peacefully protest or exercise other lawful and protected constitutional rights." As it stands presently, the last sentence that I'm proposing we get rid of and replace conflicts with the first sentence of the current definition, because the first sentence is sort of pointing at this flexibility and discretion that the police chief makes a good faith determination based upon the facts and circumstances at hand. It's broader. And because of that, potentially more open to being used, you know, in ways maybe that weren't intended. But adding this last sentence that's more, that refers to the statutory definition of disaster is more prescriptive, and so those two can't really exist alongside each other, if that makes sense. So it's kind of an either-or fork in the road. I would see it from a policy standpoint, and I think, you know, that's really what I would urge council to discuss, is kind of what do we intend? What do we want to do with this exigent circumstance definition? Pros and cons, I think the implication of the of the latter approach of using the statutory definition, A, you have a clear legal standard. I think that's unquestionable. It's the statutory definition that's laid out in a fair amount of detail. Again, eliminates concerns about an individual police chief's discretion and would require emergency authority under the disaster declaration by a mayor or governor in order to exercise it. Could be too prescriptive for some potentially and could be too prescriptive to be useful in more situations. The reason for that, the reason I say that is because oftentimes a disaster declaration does not happen immediately as an event is unfolding. And so kind of from a timeline standpoint, it could eliminate the use of this in certain scenarios that are more time-sensitive. And then, of course, as I've described, it would it would make the response timing dependent on the mayor or the governor's decision-making, so. The first, I'll go back to the first one and just talk through it. The more kind of open-ended, good faith and reasonable belief standard, which is the existing language in the first sentence, again, gives them more discretion in time-sensitive emergencies, is consistent with definitions in other communities' ordinances. However, as we all know, the exercise of discretion is different between individual people. So you could get kind of different standards over time depending on who's sitting in the chair, the chief's chair, so. That's really the bulk of it. At this point, I would recommend, I think we leave Chapter Six alone and come at that separately at a different time and take a closer look at what we need to do to update it, to align it with current practices for emergency management locally. And I think we, in the interest of kind of staying focused on this, do that separate from this process and focus this discussion on the narrow definition of exigent circumstances. So with that, I'll take questions and we'll attempt to clarify as much as I can.
Grace?
Say thank you for the presentations, and I think we could possibly, like, is it possible? I guess the question of doing the alternative, the second one, where we just refer to the Illinois Emergency Management Act. And, but, it doesn't have to actually be declared by the mayor or the governor or officially by the mayor. Like, if it were exigent circumstances, kind of like the first one, that's defined by the mayor in situations that meet the criteria for the Illinois Emergency Management Act. Does that make sense? Like, that we could say it meets this criteria of this high bar of emergency catastrophe, even if there's not a statewide or the mayor didn't officially order something for the whole city, but that for the purposes of this ordinance, we need to meet that standard at least? Does that kind of thread it in between a bit?
Possibly, yeah. I'd want to think about it a little bit more closely, but I think that's a possibility. As I'm thinking through it, just kind of order of operation, from an order of operation standpoint, I don't see a practical reason why the exigent circumstances determination for using a particular technology would have to come after the disaster declaration, just in an operational sense. Practically speaking, those two things may align. You may have both of them. And we could try to sort of disentangle those two things in terms of having the declaration precede it. I'd want to think it through just to make sure that we're not overlooking anything, but I think that would make some sense to do as an alternative.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems like we can, we're writing the rules in the law right now, right? If we can have the loosey-goosey definition, seems like we could have a varied definition of the state one as well. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I was thinking a little bit along the lines of Grace in that I was just coming from it from a different angle, which is if we went with the first one, it could be in collaboration and basically sign-off from the mayor's office, right? So it's not just the police saying this is an exigent circumstance. It'd also have to go through without the formal declaration of this is an emergency. I would like to, I mean, it seems reasonable to me, this kind of definition of disaster, but I'd also like to hear, like, are there things that we're not thinking about that aren't included here? That I don't know.
Jayah, did you, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had some. Okay. My bad. Anyone else? Theresa?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around, other than the definition that we already have for exigent circumstances. What I'm trying to wrap my head around is who decides in the event, of course, that who is it that defines and makes the decisions about what an exigent circumstance in the city is that would actually, basically take the power away from the chief of police or that person to make that decision, you know, in good faith and reasonable belief? How do we reconcile that he does not, or that he does have, makes the decision regarding that? Who?
Are you saying under the current proposed definition, who would consult on that definition?
Yeah, who decides on that?
I mean, I think it's a good question. I think maybe something that would be wise for us to develop some kind of internal procedure for if we were to use that definition. I would just, off the top of my head, I would guess that in a circumstance like that, it's likely to be consulting with legal, I would guess.
Well, and what kind of circumstances, you know, to, if we're going to narrow what the city, what the state definition is, then what is, what would be the circumstance within the city where one would define or say, this is an exigent circumstance? What is that definition of exigent going to be exactly? If in fact, you're going to say that it's not the police chief's good faith and reasonable belief, then whose good faith and reasonable belief is it? Who determines and who defines what an exigent circumstance actually is?
So if we're tying it to, particularly to the disaster definition and if we were to, quote-unquote, take that decision out of the chief's hands and make it contingent upon, you know, the mayor making a disaster declaration, I would still think a mayor is typically going to get input from all the public safety officials who are involved, the legal counsel, and sort of a small group of people that would be considered subject matter experts in the moment when there's a determination of whether we need to declare a disaster. I think that's also a decision made in conjunction with the state emergency management officials as well, because there's a process that ties the local disasters to the state agency's processes also.
So depending on what the action or whatever that circumstance might be, there's, our ability to avert it may actually not happen. We'll be in the disaster by the time somebody makes a decision as to what it is. And/or somebody will be making a determination about whether something is a disaster or not, not based on what is seen, but based on what they think.
You're saying someone who isn't the police chief?
Somebody that isn't, well, let me put it this way. Somebody that is not an expert in that particular type of field or something. They'll be the ones making that decision on whether it's exigent or not, or they'll be defining what exigent actually is.
So just trying to parse this. So I think if we take the approach that Grace inquired about, where we would sort of decouple the disaster declaration piece from just using the definition under the State Emergency Management Agency Act to say, this definition of disaster is what we think an exigent circumstance for the purposes of creating a carve-out in our own ordinance for approval of surveillance technology. We think that these two things should be one and the same, essentially. In that scenario, the chief would still ultimately make a decision, does it fall under this definition? Which is more detailed, gives examples of the types of events that would be considered a disaster under the state law, and also if we did this, then an exigent circumstance under our own ordinance.
May I try to elaborate, too? So what's currently in the proposed ordinance on the table for Urbana is that that first definition that he showed of exigent circumstances with a pretty lower threshold that's determined by the chief of police and then approved by the mayor. So if you look at actually in the ordinance, Section Six, just because the definition says it's determined by the chief of police, the mayor still has to approve that or their designee to initiate the steps of an exigent circumstance. So even though our definition said the chief of police determines it, they still need the mayor's approval either way. And then if you look at the second alternative, using the state thing, the mayor would set that. So either way, the mayor is the one who ultimately decides if we're in an exigent circumstance in either definition or either system. It's just a matter of if you go through a chief of police first, which I think is actually not the most appropriate, especially if we're going with this disaster thing, because it could be the fire department, it could be Public Works. And that's, again, back to why I think that this should apply to all city departments rather than focusing on one in particular. So I think it would make sense to have the mayor decide that we've met this threshold, even if there's not an official emergency declaration out, that the mayor decides that we've met this threshold. And then we initiate the exigent circumstances from there.
Is there anyone else? Any other comments, discussion? Jayah?
Yeah, I think that's some of what I was getting hung up on, is how this would work, especially if it wasn't in the police department. I think the second option with potential minor modifications gives us a little bit more clarity that it ultimately, and maybe we need to say this, that it would ultimately be the responsibility of the mayor to determine if the standard had been met. So I lean more towards something more like alternative two, so that we can make sure that we're capturing all of the potential needs in which we might need to make an exception from guidance for any technology that we're using.
Grace?
Agreed. I would just say that the intent of, in the drafting process of the proposed ordinance, that we were intending to set that higher threshold. So when we were referencing Chapter Six of the City Code, we were intending to reference this emergency disaster stuff through the state. So I will just say that that was the intent of the original drafting, was to set a more kind of emergency catastrophic standard, but also have a local mechanism so that we can determine that without having to wait on a state-declared natural disaster, but that we're still determining that higher threshold for ourselves. So I think that this alternative two, as we've discussed, with maybe a little thinking and tweaking of the language so that it can be, the mayor declares that in line with these requirements and keeping that second sentence about not interfering with people's constitutional rights. And so I'm happy to, we can continue kicking this around, or if other people have any more decided thoughts at this time.
Mary Alice?
I was wondering if, I mean, we have been having the conversation in terms of whether or not this ordinance is going to cover the entire city or the police department. But I'm wondering if there are, if there's been any feedback from staff in any of the departments about this kind of disaster being tied to the exigent circumstances. If I look at Oak Park, for example, it's much more narrow in that it's not all the different disaster things, right? Serious physical injury of a person, imminent danger of significant property damage poses a risk of harm to the safety of the occupants of the property, the public. All right, it's very kind of tailored towards, because generally speaking, we're dealing with, we're definitely dealing with the climate, but we're also dealing primarily with people, right? Rather than just kind of nature and the forces. And so as I look at this, my immediate thought, even though it's not 100% true, is this is primarily for those kind of nature-type of things that happen. If we have a tornado, if, you know, we have some big flood or something, those are all natural disasters, and that's where my head goes. So I guess my question is, do we mean beyond those natural disasters? That exigent circumstances exist beyond natural disasters?
I don't know who had the hand up first, but Grace?
And as far as, are you referring to the state definition focusing on natural disasters?
Well, I'm just looking at this definition up here.
Well, could we go to the alternative one? Is that what? Yeah, the alternative two. So the state definition does talk a lot about natural disasters, but it does say, or human-caused, and it includes riots, critical shortages of essential food and fuels, hostile military, paramilitary action, or attacks of domestic terrorism. So I mean, I think that this encompasses both natural and more significant man-made disasters. Or were you talking about the first Urbana definition?
No, I was just looking at the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act, right? It's a disaster if it's an occurrence of threat or widespread or severe damage, injury, loss of life, et cetera, et cetera. I feel like this was primarily written for natural disasters. And I recognize that it has been And I recognize that it has been used in other circumstances, most recently under COVID, right? But there's been a lot of pushback about was this act originally intended for that kind of action? So I just want to be really clear that a disaster is more than natural. There are, there are human interactions that could create a, a situation that is unexpected that we don't have the right tools to address. So just food for thought.
I would just say, I, I think, you know, even beyond the natural disaster portion of it, I mean, those are everyday situations where something chaotic happens. I'm in communication with whoever that individual, whether it's police, fire, whatever the case may be, I'm in communication with that individual anyways. I mean, that would essentially kind of play into the same role of me being the one to make that decision anyhow. I don't know if that's kind of, I think, what Jaya or Jaya was saying, but Jaya, go ahead and speak for yourself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, although I'm going to make a point that's going to sound funny following that, which is that I'm going to encourage us to think about this not in terms of people who are currently in roles, right? So thinking about that we're drafting something that, I was planning on saying this already, just so you know, for when we have a future mayor, when we have a future chief of police, when we have different leadership in any of our departments, right? So that as we get into the meat of this, and we're looking at creating specific policies for how a technology that we have said falls under this ordinance, draft ordinance, once it's finalized, would fall under it, that we're thinking about, okay, when are the times that we can't wait to go through the normal steps of council approval, right? And I will say for myself, at least if we've determined that something is surveillance technology, I don't feel comfortable just saying, okay, department head, you've decided this is an emergency, go for it. So that's what I, I think is important, that we're clarifying in this, this piece. And I think, you know, the, the language from the state law does give us, you know, a general sense of, yes, a lot of it is about natural disasters, but I think it does, for me at least, capture the areas that I think we might want to make an exception, where we would be delegating that authority to make a short-term decision to the appropriate department head and the, and the mayor. So I think that's, you know, kind of those two pieces of like, it's very easy to think about this in terms of who's here now, but I think we need to think about like, what are the long-term implications? Because we're, we're drafting something that's not meant for just now, that's supposed to be a tool for the future too.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, if I go up?
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you all, just wanted to share an additional resource. Well, actually, maybe I'll start with this one. This is one that we've already seen in some of our previous discussions. I resent it, I think, with just some minor corrections. So this was Oak Park versus Illinois, and we compared the kind of main meat of the ordinance in the middle of September in a productive discussion, and then I've later sent out the specific definitions. There was one correction, I just copied the wrong section, so the annual reports weren't aligned, so they weren't very aligned, because it was comparing like the youth report versus the annual report. So anyway, that's that. I've kind of gone through and started putting things in red that are included in one ordinance and not the other, that we might want to consider adding from Oak Park, or evaluating if we want to keep it in ours. And then, so that was about that. I started putting some things in random colors.
I was just going to say, what's purple?
I had this started turning into some of my own like notes, that I was like, oh gosh, I share this one. I think purple is ones that are, yeah, very similar, but like worded a little differently. So like all of those purple sections are kind of talking about the same thing. But then getting down to the specific definitions, this is hopefully helpful, and again, has been emailed out. I'm down to keep it a lighter conversation today, but just wanted to highlight and share this resource. So looking at the specific examples that were covered or included in the surveillance technology, have the column with Urbana, things that were listed in ours, and then compared to Oak Park, Illinois, Boston, Massachusetts, Oakland, California, and Dayton, Ohio, and have gone through their specific examples as well, that they say are specifically listed as examples of surveillance technology, and they all say not an exhaustive list. So not necessarily everything, but these are some examples. And then I've ordered them in, like the top are things that are included in all four other ordinances, like license plate readers, stingrays, biometric data, gun tot detection system was actually in all the other four, thermal imaging, you can go through and read some of the others. So I put at the top the ones that are in all the other four ordinances that seem, you know, in line, which makes sense, because again, this was drafted in line with other examples that cities are using, so that makes sense. And then towards the bottom are things that are only included in the Boston ordinance and not others. And so we could see if those are still important for us, or if they fall into other kinds of things, like mobile DNA capture technology probably falls under the biometric data as another example already. So we might just have more specific things that we may or may not want to keep. And then Oakland, California also has body worn cameras specifically listed, but ours in Oak Park do not, especially because we have Illinois law that supersedes that. And then other things to consider, I put in yellow here, is about drones, especially with that Illinois Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act. And I hope that we can have a follow-up on some of the questions on how the use was proper for the No Kings protest, and other ways that we're using campus drones in Urbana, and how that works with the Illinois Act. So I think that that would be something worth including here, even if it's just to say that drones are covered under the Freedom of Drone Surveillance Act, or maybe we do want some more specific reporting than is required by the state. There's also the Freedom from Location Surveillance Act and Protecting Household Privacy Act that I've sent in some email chains to everyone. The first email chain had like some notes, the second one had the example ordinances, and then a third one in that chain had these acts, if you would like to read through those more. So I bombarded you with a bunch of information, but I also wanted to give you a sneak peek so you can orient, have some context what we're looking at. So again, those are things that were specifically included or not in these four other ordinances, and things that we may want to consider based on other state statutes. And then I also have the general definition here. I added Dayton, Ohio after I did this, so I didn't add them yet, but I have Urbana, Oak Park, Boston, and Oakland. They all have pretty similar definitions in general of things that can, you know, retain, process, keep whatever personally identifiable information. That's all similar kinds of definitions there. And then I also put, kind of back to that other question of what it applies to, and so Oak Park applies to the police department only, Boston is all city departments, and the mayor submits the request for approval to city council, and Oakland is all city staff. And the way it's worded, it makes it seems like the staff go directly, it's like any city staff wanting to use surveillance gets approval from council versus staff going through the mayor versus the police department directly doing the request. And then these are similarly things that are specific examples that are not covered in the ordinance as surveillance technology. And again, ordered with things up at the top that have the most agreement with other city ordinances, things like routine office hardware were included in all four, manually-operated cameras for digital recording and things, probably like when we're recording our closed-session meetings or things for notes, that that's not included, included here. Things that cannot be transmitted remotely, like binoculars and night vision goggles, are not included in a lot of these examples. And other manually-operated things, things that are explicitly for city purposes, like city security cameras on the property or for internal things. And then as we go down, some that have less and less similarities to some of the others. And I think these really depend on what the city has set up, like some have parking in their databases or employee key fobs. I think it just depends if your city has key fobs for the employee, does your parking data have everyone's license plate and name in their record? So I think that it just depends on kind of what aspects the city is dealing with that they may want to consider as either part of that or not. And then again, body worn cameras is only us and Oak Park, but that's, makes sense because it's Illinois statute. And then there were some that were, I put down at the bottom here, that were included in the other ordinances but not in ours. Some of the ones I thought were interesting was they talked about the police ditch dispatch system. They have CAD, I think similar to like our MetCAD, right? And I think that would be an interesting thing to consider, how we may want to have that explicitly as an example or not. Some of them also explicitly exempted interview rooms for police departments, I think that's another interesting one. Some had also holding cells and internal video systems, and then the other, some others just had in the interview room. One had smart meter technology for water sewer utility purposes. I'm guessing the city deals with their water utility, and we do not as a municipality, so that's another example where it just depends on what the city is dealing with that they may want to include. And then another one also had personal communication devices that have facial recognition only for the purpose of user authentication. And I'm guessing like if your city device has a facial recognition to access it, that that would be exempt if it's only for employee entry purposes. So those were some other ones that we may want to consider adding that we did not have. So just wanted to present that, happy to take any questions or thoughts, and also just let people mull over a bunch of information that was thrown at you.
Thank you for the work on that, Grace. Are there any questions? Mary Alice?
No, this is, this is really helpful, I appreciate you putting it in a spreadsheet. I do have an ask though, because we're getting lots of documents, and sometimes it's easier for me to see things on paper. And so if you are going to do any of these types of documents in the future, I'll certainly ask the clerk, if maybe we could ask the clerk to print them for our discussion, that way we can have them in front of us, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, definitely, thank you.
Darcy?
In that same vein, very briefly, do you, I understand you emailed these today. We can touch base afterwards, but is there an interest from the council that this be included in future discussion items for this? Previously, we have not included like the entire list of version history, we've tried to keep it as updated as possible, but since this is like a lot of reference material, I guess direction to staff on how they would like to receive this, we got a request for print, but do you want it in the packets? Do you want it in minutes?
I think we can for future ones, if I may. For this discussion, I did ask that we not really have things in the packet, because we've had a bunch of older versions, and sometimes there's like an old memo and a version and another version, and then another attachment, and it's like almost overwhelming with old stuff that's not as relevant. So especially since this was a discussion, and I also was putting this together like on my lunch break today, so I didn't have it ahead of time. So I didn't have it there, but I do agree that we can have stuff in the packet, but I also just want to be sure that it's streamlined and like the most recent up-to-date version and not getting behind on them. So I agree, I think for our next discussion or next move on this can definitely include this more ahead of time and have it printed out.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, I, I think, thank you Grace, as always, for pulling all this together. I guess I'm, I'm curious from the council in general is, what, what's it going to take to get this done? We've been working on this for almost a year. I know there's a lot of information to process and digest, and it's been presented in different ways to try to make that easier. But I guess it would be helpful to me to know, I know Grace has carried a lot of this, Matt's done a bunch as well, just to figure out like what is still needed to actually put this in place and move things forward.
Comments?
James? So I, I can recall saying, maybe about six weeks ago, that I thought this could be done by the end of November. At that time, I, what, what felt like to me, what the sticking point was, was having most of council in the same room at the same time. And that still has not materialized, so. So we either have to accept that it's going to be passed by a smaller amount of council, or, I think that's, I don't, I don't think there's been a delay on moving forward, other than the ones that have been asked because people couldn't be here at this point. That's my impression.
Jay, I think it's an excellent question, because poor Grace comes back every time with more information for us, and at some point you have to say, okay, let's, let's pause and let's, let's recalibrate and figure out what, what do we are all on board with. And, and so one of the things that I struggle with a little bit is I have some ideas of things I'd like to see change, and I'm sure other people do too, or have like feel strongly about one part or the other part. You know, we have what Grace's last proposal was, I, it was done before some of these comparison ones. But I, I don't know a good thing other than, I, I would like to, I think at the end of the day, and I did ask Grace this, if she would be open to different things, and she said that would have to be an amendment. So I feel like maybe if people feel like they have enough information, maybe we put something to the staff, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think, in my opinion, the answer to the question is for everyone behind these desks to understand that not everyone's going to be happy with everything, and finding and understanding that there is a middle ground, again, we're going, we got to give some to, to get some, to get something moving. Understanding that as time goes on, future, you know, comes down the line, we can make changes, you know, we can add to, we can take away. But if we're going to get something across the finish line, we all have to be on the same page in knowing that we may not, everything that we thought of may not be in there. Even some of the things that you thought of will be there, that you didn't necessarily want, that just needs to be the understanding. I think that we have enough, and I've said this before, and I appreciate the work that, you know, Grace and everyone here has put in, well before my time, but, you know, just, we, we have enough, you know, I feel like, to move something forward. It's just a matter of us just buckling down and just getting it, getting it done.
Harris?
Just to add, a lot of the earlier processes since I've joined was making sure that we fine-tuned definitions. So I think that was a part that Grace brought and was looking for additional feedback on, are we clear on these definitions? And then from there, more has been added into comparison. So for us, as, for me to bring it to staff, I've kind of been waiting for kind of a midpoint to once you all feel comfortable of a, a clear draft, because we have some comparisons in the draft, we have some sections that are still being asked to clarify. So I think that like we kind of skipped over the definition part, and started going more into some of the details, which has been okay as long as it's been a working, you know, just it's being worked through by you all. But just as Mary Alice did add, at some point, we do want this to go back to staff to provide you all with feedback. As we're developing this, we do have to remember that the staff will have to live by this in a sense. So we do want to give you that feedback as to what works and what we would love for you all to take in consideration as this moves forward.
Jaya and then Sherry.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and you know, I think obviously we, we want as many voices, as many participants as possible. And again, the, the action, the, the speed with which things are happening has been exponentially faster over the last, well, since the election, and I'm very grateful for that. Just, you know, again, we've been talking about this for a long time, we could talk it to death. And so I'd like to make a suggestion for people to consider, which would be to have printed copies of the current proposal and these additional documents for our next meeting. If there are amendments that need to be considered, if those could be sent out and printed out in advance as well, that way we all have all the materials that we can sit down, right, for, for folks who do want to be able to compare side to side, because, you know, I think that's a very reasonable request to say, let's let city staff look at this so we can understand. But I think even if, if we can have some of that happening simultaneously of like, is there anything that just seems totally not feasible in the current draft, that information from city staff would be really helpful, and then if we could just, just to sit, sit down and figure out what are the sticking points, what might folks want to amend, I think it might help us get, get this through.
Sherry?
I guess I, what I want to add to this is that some of, I
I guess what I want to add to this is that some of, I know some of the definitions of what you called surveillance and stuff like that, and not, in my understanding too is that the last time we were talking about certain softwares and so on and so forth that, that folks would have to get permission to use. And I, when you say city staff, Darius, do you mean everybody that, that, that works here in different departments or do you just mean like you and the mayor, the city administrator, the, I mean, executive administrator, so on and so forth, finance director, heads of departments, so to speak?
Yep, there you go, heads of departments. We'll make sure that all departments have opportunity to provide feedback as when we provide, when I provided the list of surveillance tools, it went out of the police department. So we included other departments in this portion. So I know originally this all started more directed towards the police department, but we have other departments that use tools that may come into consideration and we wanted to take care of that in advance. So we do-
So they'll have some input about this as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's what I, if, it's like, you know, one person's surveillance is just another person's analysis tool. So it, I don't, and personally on my part, I feel that, that my expertise is none of this, to be honest, and I feel that it's incumbent on us as council members, well, for my part, I'll just speak to that, to not be held liable or accountable should something disastrous or catastrophic happen and we not have the tools to take care of it. And once we put ourselves in, in that mode of, oh, everything has to come past us in order for certain tools to be used and so on and so forth, we are making ourselves and the city liable for anything contrary, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, that, that could happen for the lack of us not having something or not giving permission or not allowing something. Because I'm, that's not, I know that's not my bailiwick as a, as a council person for me to be able to say, well, you can't use this because that's been considered surveillance when actually that person may need it to analyze, you know, something else that is important to the city. And I, you know, I'm already apologizing to some people in my constituency and my ward for not being able to make things happen because of us not having certain, certain things. People in my ward for some reason think we do have ALPRs and stuff, we don't. So when there's a shooting and the car zips off and they come to me saying, well, where the cameras? How come that didn't happen? It's like, well, did they turn left or right? That makes a determination for whether or not, and if they can't, if they turn left and they're going towards champagne, they're going west or however, you know, that may be, then we might be able to find who did that. If they turned right, sorry, not a whole lot we can do about it. And so, and I literally did have that kind of conversation with somebody just last week. So I, for my, for my part, I just want to know that we're not thinking, we're not painting all of Urbana with the same brush because not everybody that lives in Urbana is living in the best of circumstances sometimes. And so there may be times when some of this stuff will be needed and then if we're putting obstacles in the way of the city to gain that, and I don't, and I'm not even thinking about departments, any specific department, I'm thinking in general, then I think we open ourselves up for liability issues, so.
All right, I think Mary Alice had her hand up first and then Grace, I'll come, you're next.
Yeah, so I'm hearing a couple of things. One, Darius, I think it's, it's really good for us to solidify what we think these definitions are, but to Jay's point, I'm just trying to figure out, Grace, you had, I think November, sorry, September 15th, I think it's the last date that I got an email with the draft ordinance. It's version six. I don't know if that is the most recent and if it is the most recent, we've had some conversations past that where you've like gone through the whereas and highlighted and so forth. Is it updated based on all of those conversations, version six?
The version six notes from September 15th has the highlighted ones, that was the document that we were on during that meeting while I was highlighting things during that meeting.
Oh, so it's not the clean one?
Correct, yeah. It's not clean, but I would be happy to put together a-
It would be great if we could have an email with all the most recent information so we're not all digging through our email boxes trying to figure out what's most recent.
Sure, some of the problem is we highlighted a bunch of stuff to just think about.
Right.
That you were like, hey, that sentence reads weird, so it's just in red, but there's nothing that I have to change it, we just highlighted it as think about it, so I don't really have direction on changing it or not. So I can do a clean version where I just omit or like un-highlight everything we had discussed, but a lot of those things, we didn't have any clear direction or consensus. It was just like, hey, I don't like this sentence and that was it.
But can we have that with the highlights so we can?
That's what the 9/15 version should be.
Okay, maybe I need to download it because it does not show me.
And if not, I can resend it or it's on this computer as well and, yeah. Because it says clean, because it was a clean version, but then there were notes added, so it should say that in draft.
Mary Alice, can I say what I think you're saying?
Yeah.
And Grace, correct me. I think you're asking for a brand new, fresh one with all of the changes that were recommended and that be our new starting point?
Well, that would be good, except for I think when we had the conversation, we didn't have 100% consensus on things that we were going to omit or add. So I think this is what Grace has put up here, so you see yours is clean with notes, that's, that's not the one I downloaded, I just downloaded the clean one.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I can send this one. So yeah, the things in red were like, you were just like, I don't know, come back to the sentence, it looks weird to me, and there were some here that was just like, or consider this. So yeah, I can share this one if I haven't already.
I think if we use this as like a starting point, like this is what we're gonna have the conversation about, I think that will move the needle.
Sure.
Thank you.
Jay, I think you had your hand up. Oh, never mind. Grace?
I did want to speak to the liability risk piece that was mentioned and just remind us that there is arguably more liability to not have these policies in place, that there are a lot of cities that continue to be sued for having surveillance without having a policy or protections in place. There's a lot of cities that are still in litigation over having license plate readers with no policy on it. The Illinois Drone Surveillance Acts requires that if we use drones, we have to have a policy on them. They are being used by other entities in Urbana, not really sure how that all fits in, but just saying that for me, the bigger liability is not having these policies and approval in place is how we are opening ourselves up to potential liability. And that, again, this ordinance is just about approval and having policy for these surveillance technologies, just because it's on the list doesn't mean we're banning it by any means, it just means that we're approving it in a formal process and we have a policy which I believe actually protects the city in liability.
All right, thank you. All right, Jay?
As appropriate, can I ask that for council members who might not be able to be at the next discussion, we communicate with them and see if they would like this information shared with them. It may be that folks are not in a place to review it, but I do want to respect the point that James made, that this is a, is a big project that a lot of people have been part of for a very long time. And it may be that folks who are not here in person aren't able to do that review, but just to make sure that at least know that we're, we're moving closer to a final version and would love to have their input if they feel up to it.
And I can, me and Darius can take that responsibility for sure, absolutely. All right. Yes, sorry. I was saying, me and Darius, we can take that responsibility to reach out, so. Darcy?
Just lastly, as a housekeeping, if it is the intention that this item comes at the next committee of the whole and we are wanting all of the more recent stuff as well as the notes in the packet, it was mentioned as well that perhaps council members who have intentions of amendments should share those ahead of time. If you want those amendments to be included in the packet, AKA available to the public ahead of the meeting and on the website, I need them no later than Thursday at noon to make sure that they are in the packet. If you are not as concerned about them being in the packet and publicly available, email them to the city council email group and send them to the council ahead of the meeting. That's it.
All right. Grace?
Thank you. All right, that'll conclude the discussion around the surveillance ordinance. Thank you all for your input as well and I think we're, we're one step closer to getting this bad boy across the finish line, or bad girl, whatever, whatever. All right. Next item is mayoral appointments. The following appointments are recommended for council approval, I will do these together if that's okay. First is Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Ms. Annie Adams, the term ending June 30th, 2026. And for the Civilian Police Review Board, Ms. Melissa Baber, with the term ending June 20th, 2028. May I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mary Alice, second by Sharice. Any discussion? Grace?
We'll just do the, the standard thanking these individuals for their volunteer service to the city and appreciate their work and welcome them to reach out with council in collaboration with their commissions. And then also had a question on the dates for BPAC, is this filling a current term? I'm just wondering why it's only until June 26th.
Yeah, so this is for her to become chair because Audrey resigned, she's no longer there, so she's taking over the main-
Like finishing the rest of a term?
Correct, yes, she's finishing that.
Thank you.
Darcy?
I also just want to call attention to the fact that normally these are June 30th and that one is June 20th. Is that a typo or is that accurate, June 20th, 2028? It's a typo?
Correction, Melissa, Civilian Police Review Board, with the term ending June 30th, 2028.
We don't want a shorter 10 days?
Yeah, I'm sorry, did I say? I'm sorry, y'all, tired. My apologies, Melissa, I do want to have you here until June 30th, so yes. All right, motion made by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice, discussion has been made, if there's no further discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes, Ms. Annie and Ms. Melissa, congratulations. All right, with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned, please stick around for committee of the whole. Grace, can we have a five minute break before, are we okay to have five minutes? All right, go for it. Thank you.
Yeah, clerk, ready? You ready for the next meeting, clerk?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna, I think we can finish up this last one relatively quickly, so I'll call to order this meeting of, special meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have no minutes from previous meetings, are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, no known presentations, do we have any public input tonight?
Sorry to keep you, sorry to keep you from your break, my name is Ben Jocelyn, I'm a member of, or a citizen here in Urbana. Hi there, mayor and council. I was pretty freaked out by the police presentation last week. I think last week's presentation said a new precedent in the militarization of Urbana's free speech and, because the police openly, department openly stated that they had the SWAT team on standby and talked about spending $15,000 of personnel money, I still want to know more about what that money exactly was spent for. And perhaps it's already been standard fare to pay the SWAT team or special weapons and tactics officers to be on hand for other protests in the past like Black Lives Matter or other civil rights protests, but it's news to me and raised some pretty specific questions. The first is, how much money did Urbana pay to have SWAT team at the ready for the No Kings rally? Were they stationed in the county building or otherwise nearby? And do the council members believe that the call to bring in the SWAT team was appropriate for that event? I also want to know if the council believes that that is something that the people of Urbana want or think is appropriate. I am curious if there's a sniper team positioned on the roof of the county building for that protest. I emailed the deputy chief to ask if that was something that happened and have not yet received an answer. And then my third sort of set of questions regards why the deputy police chief presented a truncated version of Illinois State Statute 725 ILCS 167-15, Section 3, and why it was truncated the way that it was. The law actually reads, "If a law enforcement agency possesses reasonable suspicion that under particular circumstances swift action is needed to prevent imminent harm to life or to forestall an imminent escape of a suspect or the destruction of evidence, the use of a drone under this paragraph is limited to a period of time of 48 hours. Within 24 hours of the initiation of the use of the drone under this paragraph, the chief executive officer of the law enforcement agency must report in writing the use of the drone to the local state's attorney." When he presented the reason that they used the drone, the quote after it read that section of the law and had truncated it simply to reasonable suspicion to prevent harm. Reasonable suspicion to prevent harm is not a reasonable truncation of that law and does not meet my standard of accountability and openness that I really want to see from our police department. So I've got a version of these that I'm gonna send to y'all and I'm hoping that you'll have some answers for me because I'm pretty disappointed by the first presentation made by our new deputy police chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, would anyone else like to provide public input this evening? Seeing none and no further email input that we're aware of? Okay, thank you. That concludes public input, no staff report. And last item is new business, we have first resolution number 2025-11-090R, resolution estimating the tax levy fiscal year 2025 to 2026 from HR Finance.
Okay, sorry, I can't find my full screen thing, but you, most of you have seen this before. So time once again to do the tax levy, which is, as you know, an annual process. So we'll just start with a few basics as a refresher. First of all, in Illinois, properties are assessed at one-third of fair market value, that's the equalized assessed valuation. Then exemptions are applied which reduce the taxing value. The most common exemption that we see is the $6,000 exemption for owner occupied properties. And then the taxing value that's actually used to calculate the tax bill is the EAV less the exemption, so that's how, that's what your bill is actually based on. So as an example, $150,000 home would be assessed at one-third of fair market value or $50,000 if that home is owner occupied, the exemption reduces the taxing value to $44,000 and $44,000 is used to calculate the property tax bill. So another thing that's important to remember is that each taxing district levies their own taxes. So while we're doing this process, as you know, so is the township, so is the school district, the park district, all the other taxing bodies. The county calculates the total tax rate for a particular property by adding the tax rates for all of the individual taxing districts that are applicable to that property. So for most properties in Urbana, the actual city property tax is about 13% of the total tax bill. And also important to remember the taxes that we levy now in calendar year 2025 will be received in calendar year 2026. Another little tricky thing here is that while we're doing this process, the assessments that are- that are going to be used to calculate the tax levy are actually not finalized. So when we, when we ask you to approve the final levy, we're also going to ask you to approve a separate ordinance that will limit the rate to $134.99, which is the same as our current tax rate. So our goal is to maintain a stable tax rate. Our final levy extension won't be known until the spring, and then at that time, they'll reduce the corporate levy, which is the general fund piece of the tax levy, to make sure that we maintain that tax rate. So just, just for information, here's what our 2024 property taxes in Urbana look like. And as you can see, the school district is more than half, then we have all the other pieces. The next biggest piece there is the city, parks, and so on, and then the city's piece is broken out, break, broken out into several portions. We have police and fire pensions, we have the library, and then whatever's left over is the part that goes to the general fund. Also, this is, this is a pretty busy chart, but this shows all the major revenue sources in the general fund. There are a lot of revenue sources in the general fund. I think the important thing here is that down here, this green piece you can see, that's the property taxes that get passed through directly to pensions, and it, it, it shows up in the general fund, which seems a little bit odd, but that's what accounting standards require. And then the part in purple, which is less than 5%, is the actual portion of the property taxes that stay in the general fund to pay for city services. This chart shows our assessed value over time, going back to 2010. So you can, you can see that we actually lost assessed value for a while, and then it's been growing pretty, pretty steadily in recent years. That's important because when our revenues grow steadily, that helps us support our expenditures, which also tend to grow steadily. So here are just a few examples for homeowners in the city of Urbana of what they actually pay for property taxes to the city. So even the, the most expensive example here, which would be a $250,000 home, the actual amount of property taxes paid to the city are just a little bit over $1,000 annually. So for this year, again, the mayor recommends maintaining the current tax rate, which is $134.99. Again, we levy taxes for four purposes: police pensions, firefighter pensions, library operations, and then you'll see something in the ordinance called corporate purposes, which you can just understand that to mean for the general fund to pay for city services. So pension funding, it's important to know that police and fire pensions are defined benefit plans, and those benefits are set by state statute. There's, there are no options in terms of what the benefits are that we provide. We do have a funding policy that is more aggressive than what is required by state law, and that was approved back in 2018 and implemented beginning with the 2018 tax levy. At that time, we had some lengthy discussion about that, about the fact that our unfunded liability was increasing over time because we weren't adequately funding pensions, which was going to result in much higher long-term costs. So I think that was a sound decision. We will probably talk again about making some tweaks to that policy sometime in the next year. But, but the main thing here is that failing to adequately fund pensions is kind of a slippery slope that has major implications for the city's budget in the long term. So for police and fire pensions, the, the recommended amount totals $4.4 million based on that funding policy, which would have us 100% funded over 20 years, so about 20, 20, 37, that's an increase of about 11% from the last tax levy. The library is important, well, for a lot of reasons, because libraries are very important, but they're also very dependent on property tax revenue. It makes up the vast majority of the revenue that they receive, and the proposed levy for the library is about $4.9 million. That's based on the budget for the library, so this is basically what they need to sustain their budget. It's about a 13.3% increase, which seems very high, but what we need to remember is their budget, like our budget, is increasing consistently year over year. Not all of their other revenues are. So for example, the library per capita grant is fairly stagnant. They get a share of personal property replacement tax revenue, which has actually been decreasing over time. And then the last part again is the, the corporate levy, the general fund portion. That's what gets adjusted to maintain a stable tax rate, and based on maintaining a stable tax rate, we expect that to decrease in the 2025 levy at, when the levy, well, at the time the levy is extended. And I should say, we don't expect it. I think it's pretty certain that that will decrease in the final levy. So this just shows levies over time and how the pieces break out, and you can see here in recent years, libraries growing, you know, fairly modestly. Pensions, pensions back here, where we were underfunding pensions, got lower, but then started to grow before we adopted our new funding policy because of increasing unfunded liability. And the corporate levy increased for several years, but this year, again, we expect it to decrease. Also important to remember, although it doesn't affect the tax levy, we issued debt in 2025 for the fire stations, and you also approved issuance of debt to repay the Hotel Royer Development Incentive. The reason it doesn't affect the tax levy is because we're going to fully abate those bonds, but when you issue general obligation debt, actually in that ordinance, the county clerk is directed to levy taxes for that. That's because it's backed by the city's full, full taxing authority, which makes it more attractive to investors. So you will see abatement ordinances for those bonds to tell the county clerk not to levy taxes for those, but still, you're going to see them, and you're going to see them every year for as long as that debt is out there. So in order to complete the levy process, we're going to ask you to adopt the estimated levy next week, and then we will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 1st. We'll have the final tax levy on the agenda on December 8th, and that will include, again, the tax levy ordinance, the abatement of the corporate levy to maintain a stable tax rate, and the abatements for the bonds. That's it. I got nothing else. I can answer questions.
Thank you. Questions? I have one and maybe a half. Appreciate the presentations. It looks like overall, we're expecting that the EAV is going up, increased by about 7% over last year. Library fund going up, pensions going up, corporate fund going down 6%, and that's before it might be further reduced by the time taxes actually come in. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I was just wondering, kind of bigger picture, city financial question about the rationale for that of such a reduction in corporate funds of the general fund when our existing budget is very, very tight?
So the reason is, we're complying with our pension funding policy, and we're supporting the library's budget, and this has always been the case, that that's the part that has to be flexible in order to maintain a stable tax rate. So, you know, if you think about the general fund budget, property tax is a relatively small piece, and we have many other sources of revenue. We'll actually be taking a closer look at that in either December or January when we look at the financial forecast, but there are more options available in the general fund to support city services than there are for those other, for pensions and the library.
Thank you. Any other questions or motion?
Is it the motion to put this on file? No, sorry.
Yeah, good question. Do we need to approve this next week at a special council meeting?
Yeah, we're asking, yes, we have a special council meeting planned for next week, and we'll ask you to adopt the estimated levy.
Ah, so you want a motion to move it to council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will move resolution number 2025-11-090R, resolution estimating the tax levy for fiscal year 2025, 2026, onto the next city council agenda for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James, to move this to the next city council meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? It looks like that passes. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Next item is council input and communication. Any input from the council tonight? Seeing none with no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Cut off, easy, Grace.